K L T V soundtrack, K L T V soundtrack.
K L T V soundtrack.
I guess we're getting close.
Sounds like it.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Thanks for attending. As we mentioned last week, we're going to start our meetings a little different. So we got Russ Collier here, going to give us an invocation, and then we'll go into the pledge after that.
Get this all coordinated. Welcome, everyone. Can you hear me okay out there? Hello? Can you hear me okay? Yeah, good. Okay, hey, I'm Chaplain Russ Collier. For those of you who may not know me, welcome. And I just welcome the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit to this political meeting. Current government is a principality where elected officials make decisions for God's people. Some of these meetings have a tendency to have heated discussions. The reason for this is because there is also a dark principality in the spiritual realm that can trouble us with bitterness, fear, stress, anger, doubt, disappointment, resentment, and other torments that can hinder us from governing well for our county. We don't have to deal with this torment. We can put on God's armor to protect ourselves. Let's pray God's armor over everybody. The Bible says, "Put on the whole armor of God, that ye may be able to stand against the wiles of the devil." For we wrestle not against flesh, but against blood, and blood, but against principalities and powers and rulers of the darkness of this world, again, spiritual wickedness in high places. So we put on the armor of God. So Lord, I just ask that right now, we put on God's armor on everyone in here. Lord, please shod their feet with the gospel of peace, so we can walk in peace wherever we go, and we can usher in peace wherever we go, Lord. Lord, I ask that you put on us your belt of truth, so we speak truth, and we're able to discern truth wherever we go. And Father, I ask you put on us the breastplate of righteousness, so we walk righteously wherever we go, and we send a good message wherever we go to those around us. Lord, I ask that you put on us your helmet of salvation, so we can protect our mind from spiritual wickedness in high places, those torments that we spoke about earlier. And Lord, I just ask that you give us the sword of the Spirit, which is your word, Lord. And lastly, the shield of faith, Lord, your shield of faith to protect us from the fiery darts of the evil one that he throws at us every day. Lord, I ask that you empower everybody in this room with your armor, Lord. I pray this in Jesus mighty name. Amen.
Thank you, Russ. Want to join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask Commissioner Rader for preview of the minutes.
Yep, after review of the minutes, I move that we approve the minutes of January 6th, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Any questions, comments, corrections? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I'll run down through consent agenda. Under agreements, contracts, bid awards, we have some completion letters. A completion letter basically means the work's been done and that the retainage and anything that we held is okay to be released. So that's the purpose of a completion letter. So we have a completion letter to Weather Guard for the annex roof replacement project. By the way, this doesn't affect the insurance claim we're going through. That's a separate item. That project over there, I think we spent roughly about $208,000, which was below bid to have that done. Completion letter to Lakeside Industries for the Hall of Justice North parking lot replacement. That was right around $110,000 project. Completion letter to Specialized Pavement Markings for 2024 Joint Agency Pavement Striping Project. We do it for our county roads. I think we also do it for some of the cities. I'm pretty sure we do Castle Rock and maybe some help on the others. That's an expense, that's a pretty good expense every year. We spent about, right around $775,000 last year to do that striping. Completion letter to Lakeside Industries for the 2024 Countywide Pavement Overlay Project. That's a, that's an expendy thing we do every year with Lakeside, too. That was about $2.2 million this last year. The last item is an amendment to agreement with North County Recreation Association for their event venue completion project. We're extending the contract to December 31st, 2024. City of Castle Rock was awarded, I think, right around $80,000 out of the lodging tax dollars that accrue. They've spent about half of that. They're, they just, they have some more work to be done, so they, they're extending this to the end of this year to get all that work done at that project. Board correspondence. Letter dated 1/6/25 from Haley Johnson, the elections manager, regarding the local voters pamphlet administration rules. That's basically the 2025 manual. Letter dated 12/27/2024 to Mike Reardon, Executive Director for Area Aging, Agency on Aging and Disabilities of Southwest Washington, regarding the appointment to the, they call it, I think they call it the AdSwa Cog Board. We made appointments last week. Commissioner Farrell is the main point contact for that. A letter dated 12/31/2024 to Julie Lamb, Regional Director from the Los Angeles Regional Office, United States Census Bureau, regarding the summary of recommendations for revising the census blocks, maps, block groups, and tracks used for Callis County. This was a project given to Commissioner Weber back in 2017. And it's basically, he took a look at, we had an inordinate amount of zero population blocks. Didn't take into account some annexations. Just a, just a list of things that he was trying to look for and make suggestions to the Census Bureau to make their census a little better. The three of us reviewed that before it was sent out. It really doesn't make a whole lot of difference between the three districts. It's just more cleanup work. So we sent that, that letter off and fulfilled that duty he was given back in 2017. And last week, we had vouchers in an amount of $2,092,172.73. And that is consent agenda.
I'm going to approve of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. I have some questions. The top and the bottom is moved out here. Looking for hands. Okay, seeing nobody come up, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. And motion items, it's like, three different items, or two, is it two?
Good morning, Commissioners. Sean Rowley, Public Works. The first item we have before you today is a bid award to Coastal Netting Systems for the purchase of 10 portable litter fences for Headquarters landfill. The total cost is $71,512.80. We put this out to public bid. We received four bids back, ranging from the $71,512 to $133,000. These are large fences. They are 24 feet wide, 15 foot high, and have a wire mesh that would collect any windblown debris at the landfill.
They almost look like a mini, I think, Commissioner Farrell, so mini batting cage or something like that.
Pretty heavy duty batting cage.
Yeah.
How many of these will be in service at a time? All of them?
Yes, sir. Most likely, all of them will be in service at a time.
Are these being anchored down by something? I see it's got the legs on the back, but are we anchoring it to the ground at all?
We're not anchoring it to the ground, so that as we clear debris, the dozer would come up to it, shake it if there's any debris that sticks to it, and then at that point in time, it would be placed back on the ground again.
Looks nothing like what I thought it would look like.
And there are pictures here on the table if citizens are curious.
I'm good with it.
Okay, want to offer, somebody offer a motion?
I make a motion to approve the netting systems as presented by staff.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item seven, purchase of the portable litter, litter fences. I think you mentioned yesterday, the netting, they're thinking like a 10-year lifespan on that, and probably for the frame, more than that.
Yeah, as long as we don't have any damage to it by any equipment, that's our expected lifespan. Yes, sir.
As long as they don't run it over with the dozer.
That's right.
Yeah. Hey, any questions, comments on item seven? Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Okay. Item eight.
Good morning, Commissioner Susan Eugenius, County Engineer. Item eight is an amendment to our agreement with RH2 Engineering for the Tuttle Water System improvements. So we opened those bids for the water system improvements last week. And this is an amendment to the design consultant's contract to provide us construction services. This authorization will increase their contract amount by $91,886 and increase the timeframe by six months to June 30th, 2026, to give us adequate time for the construction to be completed. $91,886 is less than 10% of the bid amount. You can pretty much count for engineering services, so inspection services, and review of submittals to be in the range of 10% to 15%.
Just what we kind of refer to as the Shadow Mountain?
No, no, this is the project where we're running additional lines along Spirit Lake Highway in the Tower Road area where the existing customers have low pressure, and then an installation of a pump station out on South Silver Lake Road near Juanita. So this is pressure improvements for existing customers.
Plus, it will serve any new development and stuff?
Yes, but we're improving areas where they have low pressure and then providing for future if people want to connect.
Susan, could you briefly explain what the need for the increase in the dollar amount is? I know you said consulting?
Yes, this is for our consultant to provide us construction services. So during construction, there are a number of submittals that come in. The very technical nature, especially on a project such as this, which is not a normal road project. So there's pumps, pressure-reducing valves, materials that we're, that we're not accustomed to inspecting. This is also providing services to be on-site when they're installing some of those items because our construction staff is not experienced in that and running through the startup with the contractor.
So, things that would be unseen, so to speak, in the initial bidding process?
Correct. This is when we do most of our consultant contracts, we set them up for the design so that when we go through the process, depending on what our workload is at that time and our construction inspectors' experience with the type of work we will do, we go through the contract and say, we need your help with these items and ask for this additional work.
I'm, I'm just a little confused. I just need your help for a moment, please. I have some friends that live up in Tootle. Apparently, they are being billed by the Kelso Water System. That's who they pay their bills to, so I'm really confused. If the county's out in Tootle, then why does, why do their bills come from Kelso?
They come from our Kelso address. They should be coming from Callis County because they're addressed to this system up there. I would have no idea why they would be paying anything from the city of Kelso. We do bill from our Kelso office down on Thirteenth, and I know we have a lot of people who come and drop off their payments versus mailing, so.
I see, and I thank you, because I do know that the Kelso people are up in arms right now tremendously because their water bill is going up, I believe, fifty percent, and they're very upset, so I didn't know if that was connected.
No, our water is going up. We did three this year, five percent is what our water is going up this year.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And that water line that runs up, that's actually coming out of Castle Rock, isn't it?
Correct. That system, the water is treated by Castle Rock, and we are part of a consortium with them that we buy water from them.
I move approval of Public Works, item number eight, amendment number four.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item eight, the amendment to the professional services agreement with the RH2. Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you have, is this one you, Sean? Must be you.
Yes, sir. Thank you again. Next up on item number nine, we have a bid award for Core Solutions for Electrical Services and Weather Guard for Roof Repair and Maintenance. Both of them for a contract not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars on an as-needed basis. Per in the end of twenty fourteen, we went out for bids on these. We received multiple and multiple different categories. At the same time, we were updating our purchasing policy. With that update, it did make some of those unneeded at that point in time. At this point, we've chosen to move forward on two of them with the board currently.
This is, we, we sign these type of deals every year just so they cover us if stuff comes up. It's
Hundred percent. As-needed basis, you know, we have a leak in the roof here, we'd be able to call somebody and get immediate service at that time.
Sean, for clarification purposes, when those as-needed events occur, the board still has to approve moving forward with those, or do we, since it's somewhat of a retainer, so to speak, and we have the money, do you guys just go ahead and move forward with it?
Depending on the size of the event, most likely, we would just move forward at that point in time.
Okay.
We would expect that these would be smaller value repairs, nothing of a significant value at that point in time. We'd come back to the board.
Okay.
I move approval of the maintenance bid award, number nine.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the bid award. Core Solutions for Electrical, Weather Guard for Roof Repair. Any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, seeing none more. Call for a vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
Before we get into constituent comments, a couple updates on questions that were asked last week. David asked about, had some questions on affordable housing, and I think it kind of revolved around can individuals donate to that. And I happened to, that same, same night, I happened to sit in on a Kelso council meeting and and Jennifer Westerman from Hawsway was there and talking over their program a little bit, so I have some information on that. The bottom line is, if an individual wants to donate, they can, they can do that. You just would do, go through the sponsor, whoever the sponsor is, whether it's CAP or Hawsway, whatever, individual could do that. But what you may not know, and Sunrise Village took advantage of this, is the largest player in, in the affordable housing complex, however we want to, want to look at that, is, and I didn't know this till last Tuesday, is the IRS. The IRS offers a tax credit. They have a tax credit program that entities like Hawsway can apply for, and if they're given these tax credits, Sunrise Village, part of Sunrise Village was funded this way. Hawsway applied for tax credits from the IRS. If they're given tax credits, I think they were given tax credits, let's say fifteen years worth of tax credits, they can take those tax credits and then they can put out like an RFP, and institutions, even an individual could bid on those. What they usually find is banks will bid on those and say, trying to remember her whole thing, but I think the winning bid for the Sunrise Village project was like ten million dollars. And the financial institution that wins that bid then takes advantage of those tax credits for the next fifteen years. So, so I didn't know that. I don't know if that's common knowledge, but that's actually the biggest financing arm of whatever you want to call the affordable housing complex around is those IRS tax credits. And they just don't get handed out to anybody. They, they have to bid, they have to submit an application, and they get awarded them, and then they can take those and, and offer an RFP, or people can bid on those, and obviously, if a financial institution's going to take it over fifteen years, they expect to get their, some kind of return or their money back, right? And then what typically happens is they will just divest themselves from the property, and somebody else can pick that up. And, and it could be the managing agency, it could be, it could be one of you that wanted to invest in it and, and offer to buy that, so. It's a little bit interesting. Yeah, yeah. I may not have the answer to it. I'm just, it's kind of new to me, too.
As you know, I'm kind of a busybody. I, if, it would, that program be available to a budding program instead of a, a actual one that's already set up? Like, I'm thinking for the homeless, okay? If we had a plan, sustainable plan for that, could that be, it's submitted for an IRS help?
I don't know that I know the answer on that. I haven't looked into all the rules the IRS has on, on applying for that. I know she did mention it's kind of a laborious process and not everybody goes through it, so.
Well, when you're retired, you don't have any time. But the thing is, my idea just recently was, years ago, we had what they call Cottonwood Lodge. And I was talking to Kelly, and I guess in Spokane, they have a similar project over there that's actually being successful as well, called Healing Lodge in Spokane. But right now, there's nothing comparable about this program because Cottonwood Lodge, the guy retired, and so it left. But if we can rejuvenate that for some low housing, and it's, it's geared for people with physical, mental, emotional fragile conditions. The drug addiction would have to be addressed a little more strenuously than the Cottonwood Lodge setup, but yet, if we get those portions out of the area, you know, and get them where they're productive, and with that program, if, if we, if we propose that program to the IRS, maybe they would help us with this, getting this going. Just a thought.
Well, it'd have to be driven by, by an agency that wanted to, to do that. I, I get, I get nervous when you keep asking government here for us to do things for it. There, our role should really be limited. I haven't, I've, you know, I've been on this for sixty-nine years now, and, and I, I can't think of one program that government stepped in and taken over that is done well or done right, and, and that includes war.
Well, I, I totally agree with you, however.
So I try to stay out of that stuff. You need to have people that are dedicated and want to do that. I don't know, you might have a different opinions here, but I just, I just think we need to keep hands off on a lot of that stuff. I don't disagree that it's probably a good thing. In, back in the day, I think you called them boarding houses. We had places for people to gather and go. And a lot of that stuff has gone away, but I don't think it's our job to re, resurrect a lot of that stuff. You couldn't afford it anyways.
I, I
It's done by your government. It's going to be more expensive than you even want to dream of.
I, I do agree with you in that, to some degree on that, but right now, we have no one willing to step up. A private sector, and we have not only a large problem with homeless in Castle Rock, we're getting more and more as well. And I would like to stop this, this, this wave that's coming at us somehow. So I was, I don't know, I'm just thinking that that might be a source of money because it's going to take money to do what I have in mind, and I, maybe I can't, you know. But that would, just a thought.
With that information about the IRS being willing to subsidize basically that type of a program, maybe there's a private entity out there that would take a look at it if they had that knowledge.
Yeah, do they, people just don't know about that, the IRS subsidy? I mean, is that it?
I would guess if you ask the, the average person, who's the biggest funder behind? I, I almost hate to say affordable housing, but that's how they, they tag it. Very few, if any, would say the IRS. Most would probably say the government or Department of Commerce or something like that. But, and, and I don't, you know, I, I'm, I'm kind of after you a little bit because I don't, I am very conservative with government, the government's role, but I think we can facilitate things. I just don't want to run things. And you talked about the Healing Lodge. We're working with a a, a group, and I, I have a meeting coming up this month, I think, with the Callis Tribe and also the hospital. And when it gets to the point where we think we have a plan and, and the commissioners here bought off on, on the direction we want to go, that may be one of the funding options.
Okay.
I don't want to do this and have the county run it, though.
I see what you're saying. I agree. I think, I think that's wise. I agree on that point. I'm just looking on maybe different ways to fund a program like that because I think it's, there's a desperate need, and I'm just trying to address that. But that's good information, and, and I think with the, with the tribal community, that might be the way to go. So that's, okay, that's great. Thank you.
Okay. I, I have to say, Flo, I, I agree with your sentiment with regards to the homeless. I would, I, I also agree with Chairman Doll's assessment that we really have to analyze what role we want government to play. And taking over and running programs is not our role. Particularly because when it comes to homeless, that's a symptom of, of an illness, of a system that's broke. And giving someone Tylenol for a broken leg doesn't fix the broken leg. And if we're going to spend money in anything, I think we need to spend money and give incentives to helping fix the, the, the broken leg, if you will, as best we can. I, I don't see funding and running programs for homelessness as, as our role. But if we can give another party, a third party incentive to do that, I think that we would be, it would be in our best interest to, to help however we can with that, which is what Chairman Doll is already doing.
Thank you.
Anyway, David, I hope that kind of answered a little bit. I found out more information. It was, it was kind of nice looking at it. The other thing you've seen come before us, and we talked about it yesterday, was a, we had a, and this won't make some people happy, we had a shooting ordinance that was being requested. They were asking us to look at putting in some ordinance for shooting because they had a, it sounded like, I'm paraphrasing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but had a neighbor that was shooting constantly or at odd hours or into the river over people or something, along those lines. And what we said is bring us what you want, and we'll have it reviewed and then decide if it, if we need to go forward. So, and we did that. We took that and we had our legal counsel review that, and basically, they came back and said it was been tried in Thurston County, and it really raises a lot of issues that you wouldn't expect. Our, our charge on anything, and I think we're in alignment here, and they can disagree if they're not, but our charge on any of that, if we enact something, we don't want to cause pain to the people doing it right. You know, and, and I don't think we can do that in this without, basically, what it, yeah, should the neighbor be more considerate, but it's kind of more of a neighbor, neighbor dispute. You got an inconsiderate neighbor, and I don't know how we fix that. We get requests for that all the time. Well, we have stacks and stacks and stacks of laws, and the only people that really comply are the people that are considerate anyways. Otherwise, i- if, if laws work, you wouldn't have murder, you wouldn't have robbery, you wouldn't have all this other stuff. There's a certain, we're given free will, and there's people that use it the wrong way, and just because you have it on paper, that you can't use it that way, doesn't mean it stops, so. I don't think we need to be in a business of trying to settle neighborhood disputes. I think your neighbor should be more considerate, but as of yesterday, we weren't willing to walk that path because we just felt it was more in that line. Am I pretty close there? I mean?
Too much government input. If we get into it.
Yeah. So that's an update on, I, I think you, you saw the gentleman come up and talk on that, so that, that's where we are in that. This Wednesday, our workshop at two-thirty is Humane Society Contract and Dangerous Dog Review. We, we updated the ordinance on that to make it clear. On the twenty-second, it says County Membership Discussion. That's also Wednesday at two-thirty PM. If you remember when we were doing the budget with Commissioner Mortensen and Commissioner Weber was here on some of the entities where we pay dues to belong to, like National Association of Credit Union, WAC, Washington Association of Credit Unions, COG, any of those, those type of things. I think there was a list of them. We gave our finance manager the ability to put it into the budget, but this new board had to review before we paid those, so we'll have that discussion on the twenty-second, on those, those items, at two-thirty. And then the twenty-ninth, the Department Ecology at two-thirty PM will, will be in. The twentieth is a holiday, so you won't see our smiling faces. The twentieth is a holiday, so you won't see our smiling faces. You can show up here if you want, but we won't be here. Anything else you think I missed? Far as updates?
No, I think we're good.
Okay. It's your show, it's all yours.
Good morning, Commissioners. Regarding the Department of Ecology meeting, will you expect to see some bright faces here present or is this something over the screen where they sit up in Olympia?
No, uh, they're actually headquartered down in Vancouver and the last time we had, they drove up. They'll be, they'll be here.
They will be here, so we can see some names and faces and understand.
Yeah.
What, okay.
You'll, you'll see, uh, Bobek is, is his name, he's the local rep down in there and he has, off the top of my head, I forget the gal's name, but they'll be here and, and it's possible, I, I can't say they've committed yet, but we've kind of asked Army Corps maybe join them. So, and I don't know, I can't tell you that's gonna happen, but I know a college will be here. We actually have, I don't know, four or five meetings scheduled with Ecology this year and January twenty-ninth is the first one.
Okay, and it's here in these quarters?
It's here in these quarters.
Very good, thank you.
Uh, speaking of the Department of Ecology, now, they're the ones that are out there cleaning up the litter, right, along the roadside. Every once in a while, you'll see orange signs where it's the Department of Ecology. I mean, our highways and, and the road sides are so filthy with litter. I mean, Washington State used to be a beautiful place to be. We were, we were clean. And I know a lot of it comes from the homeless population. I mean, I'm not trying to point fingers, but let's be realistic. So, is there any other way? I mean, people that should be doing community service, years ago, we had them out cleaning up the highways, but is that considered cruel and unusual punishment anymore?
What I, what I can tell you is in the, the past where it wasn't such involuntary, it wasn't. If the work needed to be done, they put the crew together and do that. Now, they will put the crews together, but it has to be voluntary. They have to be willing to go out and, and do it.
So nothing, nothing mandatory?
Right. That's my understanding of it.
I sure wish we could do something because the medians and the exits and the entrances look like somebody just threw their garbage out and no, no accountability.
Yeah.
We need to clean up.
They push a lot, I think, and, uh, I think the program you're talking about is probably run through Ecology. I, my former employee, we accepted a section of Ocean Beach Highway. We go out there, they supplied the bags and we go out and, and do that every so often to keep it clean. I think that's the direction they try to take. Obviously, they need a heck of a lot more groups, right?
Yeah, we used to have signs along the, in, in neighborhoods that so-and-so was responsible for a, a certain area and that seems to have gone by the wayside. I mean, it's, it's too bad that we're losing our pride in, in keeping our, our county and our state clean.
Chairman, do you know if that, if that decision was made at the state level or is that a county thing that we instituted?
Not a county thing. It's a directive. The way it was put to me.
Good morning. I clean up Growlers Gilt Road and I don't have a sign, so I don't, I don't care about signs. We just need people cleaning up stuff.
You can get your, your name on it, Adopt a Highway.
Yeah, there you go, yeah. Uh, I, Rick, I want to compliment you and I know this is the, the feeling of all of you guys. And you were talking about government involvement and that to me displays wisdom that we've been looking for in all of our, our government agencies. So, yeah, the government has obviously got a limited role and we appreciate you not falling for every, every complaint and, and saying it's government, when most of it is personal responsibility.
Anything else? I, I, I will say, I, I, I I put Commissioner Farrell through a tough time last week. He kind of, sitting and I, and I don't know if Commissioner Ray or listened in for a while or not, but it was a five hour Zoom meeting with Washington State Association of Counties. Every once in a while, I'd walk in and I said, are you ready to gag yet?
They were reviewing all the legislative bills affecting the counties and trying to sort out where they were gonna focus their priorities. And, and by their bylaws, they have to have eighty-five percent majority before they'll touch anything for the counties. And basically, only takes a couple people to say, no, don't, we don't want you to touch that. And then they, they'll stay away from it. But my goodness, I'll tell you what, uh, boring, oh my word.
Always, always looking for money, one of the things. And they'll vote on it next time, they didn't have, and I'll vote, I'll vote no. But they want to tag, uh, there's a bill in the legislature and, and WASAC wants to tag on and be a supporter of it where there'll be a delivery surcharge for you people that work with Amazon or UPS or all those. There'll be a delivery surcharge for you getting your stuff at home and not, or wherever you get it and not do it, and that money will go to the state and it'll raise all kinds of, kinds of funds. To me, it's just a, it's just another hand in your pocket.
You know, something like thirty cents per package and, uh, and who's required to collect it, the delivery company or the people who sell you the package? And some people saw it as just another way to tax people and other people looked at it as a convenience fee. It saves me from driving to the store to get something. Uh, so it was, there was a lot of discussion about it.
Yeah.
But any way you cut it, it's getting back into your pocket.
Yeah, and there's a lot of counties that say, we need that money for our roads, we need that money for our roads.
Just a quick follow-up on the littering. I believe in maybe my earlier days, there used to be, if you got fined for littering, one of the, one of the penalties was cleaning up a certain part of the highway or whatever. Now, if that were the case, and I know it was because I used to see some people out in private cleaning up the road, I didn't think they were doing it just on volunteer road or perspective, then it means that there at least, it's in the past, was some sort of rule or regulation or law that, that allowed the, between getting fined, a prosecutor or, or the judicial system making that order. Maybe between our sheriff or some authority, we might know what some potential opportunities are that we, the committee or, let's say, the community can help support them in some action.
I have to say, I agree, Ron. My, my wife has a way of getting me to volunteer through ultimatum. So, yeah, there may be a way to do that.
Okay, anything else?
I do have one thing.
Yeah.
Chairman, I had a, I had a citizen approach me last night with regards to the Equestrian Center over at the fairgrounds. Um, he's a, he's a member of WASAC or his child is WASAC and they were, he was upset because that organization pays a fee to use that and it wasn't, um, wasn't drag, drug prior to their practice. And they had to cancel practice because it was getting dangerous. So, he was pretty upset due to the fact that he was told that he can't use the county equipment to drag it. Um, and they don't have, the Kelso doesn't have a, a tractor, so he wanted to see um, what recourse they have with regards to making sure that that arena gets dragged. So I told them that I would bring that up and see what we could do, uh, moving forward.
We're talking to the questioning center over at the fairground?
Yeah.
Your, your best would be get on horn with Kim? See what they do with that?
Okay.
Because PFD pretty much runs that over there, I know.
Yeah.
You know, it, uh, it's, it's, it would probably surprise a lot of people is how busy the equestrian centers are around this area. Uh, there's a lot of activity that goes on, so I, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I, I don't know what they have for equipment. Part of the question to her would probably, yeah, clear that up.
Yeah, it's booked every night, actually. There's, there's something going on at every night.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, see nothing else, uh, we will adjourn, thank you.
Good morning. I just had my appointment with a orthopedic specialist because my orthopedic surgeon can't fix my shoulder because it's too far torn up. And, uh, uh, of the three options I got given, it's gonna be a, a complete shoulder replacement. I've got two muscles, the front and the back, one that were fifty percent torn and the one over the top is eighty percent.
That would be nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, just let me know if you can, if you can call. Just tell them that you need an appointment next tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm basically, I'm doing what's to him.
Okay.
So, Ron, how's your, uh, stuff on the Board of Health going?
Okay, okay, thank you. I saw that.